Good evening, I call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invitation and pledge.
Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving in our hearts and praise on our lips for what you've done for us. And as we go into this season of Thanksgiving, may we come with hearts of gratitude, not just for the everyday things, but for the things that we don't always give thanks for. Tonight, I just want to give, return thanks to you for this city, for the administration, for the employees that help operate this city, and for the department heads, and for those that work behind the scenes to make this city function in such a smooth fashion. We thank you for our public safety officers and our fire department and police officers who put their lives on the line for us each and every day, in each and every shift. And so, we just thank you for them today, and we, just to return thanks today, and as we go next Thursday, as we gather around the Thanksgiving table, may our hearts be full of gratitude for the past year that we've come through. Be with us now as we do the business of the city, and we give you thanks for the opportunity to come here into these council chambers to do that. Go with us now and go before us as we make decisions, and it's in your name you pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Drake, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Kerry Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tac Ran, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, the gang is all here. Before we approve the agenda, I do want to make just a couple of notes at the beginning of this meeting. Our next council meeting will be a morning meeting, December 1st will be on nine o'clock meeting, eight o'clock work session, that's so we make room for the Christmas parade. We know everybody loves being here, but I don't know that we can compete with that event downtown, and it's gonna be a great, great evening there. Also, we had something that happened in the community that fortunately is, does not happen often, but we did have an officer involved shooting today as one of our officers was responding to a call for assistance, and fortunately, he is safe. But it is just a reminder that every single day, there are people throughout this city, whether you're working in police and fire, if you're working with a gas line, or hanging off of a pole handling electricity, or any of a number of different ways, we've got people that are committed to keeping our community safe and working in a great fashion. So I just want to mark that as well. Of course, the GBI is handling the investigation into this morning's incident, and that is standard protocol, and we'll just move forward from there. But I do want to make note of that, and also just express some gratitude for the officer who was fortunately uninjured in that event. So, that being said, we'll move on to the approval of the council meeting minutes from our November 3rd meeting, and council, you've had an opportunity to review these, and it will be time to make any corrections, or if not, motions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, get us started today, please.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of the ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget. After completion of the fiscal year 2021/22 close, the general fund, special revenue funds, and SPOS fund budgets need to be amended. The process of amending these budgets will bring the city funds back into compliance with the generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP standards. The, I recommend the ordinance of, I recommend your approval of the ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Morgan, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the pension ordinance. It is updated to show that Segal Marco has been chosen by the Pension Board as our new investment consultant. We're asking your approval of that ordinance.
And council, as you were advised in work session, to approve that ordinance as amended would be appropriate. Is there any discussion or questions on the item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Freddie.
Yes, sir. This is a nondiscussory investment consultant agreement with Segal Marco. This, we haven't changed investment advisors in over 10 years. This was going through as we've added the process, and we're asking you all to approve this as we move forward with them as of December 1st.
Thanks for the Mayor and Council. I mean, Freddie, issue RFP, we had about 14 proposals received, and Pension Board interviewed four different firms, a couple of them brought in a second time around before the decision was made, so we didn't look at it lightly. Obviously, it's dealing with 60-plus million dollars in a pension plan, so this is recommended for your approval. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Freddie.
Yes, sir. This is an invoice for the, for actuarial evaluations we have of each pension fund, the existing pension fund, and then the 2017 fund, and also the benefit calculation statements that we present to every employee each year. We ask you for approval to pay those.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dixon, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our annual property tax bill for our natural gas storage facility in Louisiana. The bill is in the amount of $8,266.58. This is a budgeted item, and council's approval is recommended.
Thank you. Questions for Michael on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, this is Everbridge notification system. This allows us to do outbound calling for our citizens in case we need to notify them of something. I recommend approval of this renewal of the contract of $10,190.60.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Greer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for the construction and installation of a fiber pathway to be built across the Edwah River Bridge on Highway 41 South. This will complete the last piece of our fiber build to Emerson, and it will allow us to move our current fiber route over to this new route. The total amount is $90,611 from NCI. This is a budgeted item and to be funded with the 2020 SPOS, and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen on this item? If not, motions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Champion, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for the approval of the 2022 firefighter clearance physicals. These are conducted annually and under the requirements of NFPA 1582. These were base price for $25,115, but we're asking for a price not to exceed $30,000 due to additional testing that may be done after that first round of assessments. This is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Why don't you go ahead and take that other item that's just one way to keep you and Hathaway from jumping back.
This item is for the approval to participate in a grant program through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. It's a grant for a local first responder micro grant, and it's for $20,000. Requesting approval, it's gonna be for paratech shoring equipment that we utilize for technical rescue, and we're asking the mayor to have authority to sign a resolution authorizing the application that has been seen through legal.
Any discussion? Chair, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Fire Marshal Hathaway.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this agreement is between the City of Cartersville and Life Safety Inspections Vault, known as LIVE. LIVE will monitor all inspections of suppression activity systems for the fire department and backflow preventers for our water department. This is done at no cost to the City of Cartersville. The city will be provided reports on current inspections and compliance through various fire suppression maintenance companies. This agreement is in no way an increase of requirements for our local businesses. It's only allowing us to monitor processes that are already in place, and to be of more efficient use of our limited manpowers to deal with other pending issues. This agreement was reviewed by our legal staff and is presented with their recommended edits. We rec, excuse me, respectfully request authorization for our mayor to sign this agreement with Life Safety Inspections Vault.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mark on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forsyth.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is water treatment plant expansion assessment. Due to projected increased demand on our water system and water treatment plant, it's necessary to at least go ahead and assess the options we have of expanding the capacity of the water treatment plant. Engineering firm of Weidemann and Singleton has proposed to do that assessment for us for a price not to exceed $20,000. It will be completed in January of 2023.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. This is called a slide gate installation is what I put up there, but just as a point of information, what a slide gate is, it, some people will call it a valve, it's what stops and allows flow into the wastewater plant from the entire city, so it's, it's not small, it's very large. So they have to be closed periodically when we do routine maintenance on the wastewater plant, so we need to replace two of those. We already have the material, the actual gates themselves. This item is for the labor to install two of those slide gates. We accepted bids, and the low bidder was Southern Machine Fabrication of Cartersville for a price of $17,000. It's recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously while Wade's making his way up. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to add three items to the agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Three items added. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, City of Cartersville is a Phase 2 municipal separate storm system community. We are allowed to discharge storm water into the waters of the state through a general permit through the EPD. Every five years, this gets updated, and in order to be in compliant, we request the mayor's signature to the notice of intent to allow, and also in the future, to allow the public works director or city engineer to sign other documents pertaining to this particular permit for the next five years.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wade. Birthday boy, Mr. Lovell.
Thank you. Mayor, the first one is a resolution to authorize our office to file paperwork to create the Cartersville Police Foundation, which will be an organization that people will be able to donate money to in lieu of paying their state income taxes, basically. The state has finally adopted the rules for that, so we will file that paperwork with the state, and then after it is approved, the mayor, city manager, finance director, and the chief of police will get together to come up with the actual procedures and policies that they will follow from that point going forward.
Okay.
And any other members of council you wish to participate on that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Keith.
The second involves where a individual driving a truck hit an airplane at the Cartersville, Bartow County Airport, and the attorney for the company that owns the airplane sent a demand letter to several individuals, but they also sent one to the city. And of course, since we have no ownership interest in the airport, I'm going to recommend y'all deny that demand, and we'll forward that to them tomorrow.
Okay, so this is, we need to approve the...
Resolution that authorizes us to send them into dial of the demand.
Okay, thank you. Chair, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, right before you, I handed out invoice from Robert Lorre. Last month, we had an officer involved in a police accident, the other party's at fault. Total cost to repair the vehicle, according to Travelers, was determined to be a total, basically major damage, and deemed it total, but offered us $16,656. Talking with Chief McCann, it's better for us to maintain the vehicle structurally, it's not an issue. Vehicle engine need to be replaced at $9,338.42, and also some structural damage. The net cost, and we have to pay these invoices upfront, we'll get reimbursed by the insurance company, the net cost to the city is going to be $5,230, but since these invoices will go over $7,500, I'm recommending approval of invoice to Robert Lorre and for vehicle repair to pay those invoices.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Yep.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the financial report this evening.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we will be looking at the September 2022 and comparing to September 2021. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by 1.1 million dollars, expenses increased by $383,000. Couple of revenue items I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax have an increase of about $233,000 over last year. Building permits inspection fees have an increase there of about $398,000. The water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by 1.4 million dollars, expenses decreased by $88,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by 6.9 million dollars, expenses increased by 4.4 million dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, and increased, increases in transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by 1.8 million dollars, expenses increased by $2 million. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increase of cost of purchase electricity, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last year by $1,000, expenses decreased by $28,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. Solid waste fund, revenue decreased over last year by $189,000, and expenses increased by about $3,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber objects fund, revenues increased over last year by $120,000, expenses decreased by $85,000, and this is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In our cash position for the month of September, total unrestricted cash increased while the total unrestricted cash decreased. SPOS fund accounts for the September 2022, SPOS 2003, a balance is $56,747.50. SPOS 2014 account is $231,991.10. SPOS 2020 account balance is $6,823,261.69. That is my report for the evening.
Yes, sir. A couple things Tom could point out, the building permits, that number, obviously, we're actually at our budget, we initially budgeted $500,000, we've already through September, collected $496,000. A lot of that is a growth in community, it'll give you breakdown overlook, which then the Main Street was about $197,000 of that, and you have Carter Grove, some official houses going on there, Everton Estates, Jackson Farms, and Felton Walk make up the kind of, basically all those combined, including overlooks, $324,000 out of that $496. That's obviously new development in the city of itself that's generating that. Obviously, those kind of one-time permits was, were hopeful, obviously, on our city utilities. General fund, even though the numbers are showing a net loss, but it's through September, obviously, everybody paid their property taxes November 15, so we'll start getting property tax revenue here in the next month or two, but overall, the city's doing financially well.
Generally, just part of the ebb and flow of those balances. Mr. Sir. I did, the, the lost money, is that, how, if we could maybe see where that's charting ahead of or behind where we budgeted?
Yes.
Coming months, that'd be, I think that'd be real helpful, too. It's great that the year-to-year, the numbers look great, just want to make sure that, maybe get a picture of where that's charting relative.
I can include that also.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right.
Any other questions for Tom on the finance report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Porter, you've got to kick us off with this next phase here, this presentation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, if you recall, you approved spending some SPOS money along with Bartow County and GDOT, we got funding to do a Tennessee Street corridor study. We evaluate some firms, Wade Wilson, Randy Manino, David Hardgrave for our staff, and Tom Sales from Bartow County, some others, looked at some firms. We hired Stan Tech, Stephen Hopper's here this evening to kind of go over what came out of that report, and some possibilities for us to look at Tennessee Street improvements. That is a state corridor, so we, any improvements, we'd have to kind of, obviously, work with GDOT to make those things happen, but I'll let Stephen Hopper come up and present the report to the council. You do have a hard copy in front of you, Steve's gonna kind of hit the highlights, but you do have a hard copy in front of you. If you have any pickled questions now, or after the presentation, or later on, you let me know and we'll go forward from there.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We wanted to show you what we've been up to on Tennessee Street, and we've been looking at it through a lens of planning to reinvigorate and get Tennessee Street going into that Main Street for Cartersville. I know you already, guys already have a Main Street, but this is, Tennessee Street has the Main Street USA feel to it, outside of the feel of like 41 and the 75 corridor. We came into the project and we, we said, what does this corridor want to be? How can we improve it? What are the enhancements that are required to increase pedestrian connectivity, increase and improve pedestrian, vehicular operations for the corridor, and then kind of prevent some of those conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians that would hopefully eventually encourage redevelopment and exciting things for the future of the corridor. So when we first started, we said, what if something along the corridor that looks like this now, this is both near south of the corridor and the north end, what if something like that starts to look a little bit like this along the corridor and increase pedestrian activity as well as those vehicular operations? The corridor that we're looking at is from Felton Street down to Postell and West Avenue. You can see some of the goals that we have for the project that I've already mentioned. It's about a two-and-a-half mile corridor. We, we created the project team with the folks that Dan just mentioned, as well as Stan Tech, the Stan Tech team, I'm Stephen Hopper with Stan Tech as the project manager. We also incorporate tool design for some of our traffic operations analysis. These are some additional things that we've considered. There's, I showed you those pictures earlier, those are what we do when we come into a corridor, how can we really make, jazz this corridor up? This corridor on Tennessee Street, there were some things that were inherently different than a lot of the corridors that we look at, the trains, the truck logistical traffic that moves through the downtown, I'm sure all of you are aware of, create some challenges, but we believe they also create a number of opportunities as well. We broke the corridor up into three separate character areas because the corridor is not the same, it's two and a half miles. The corridor starts really from West Avenue up to about Howard Street, just south of the high school, it's kind of our urban area, from Howard up to Porter, that's kind of what we're calling the transitional area, there's a lot of driveways and open lots there, and then from Porter north to Felton, there's no more stop control, that's where we see a lot of the speed start to pick up, and that continues on to Felton. We looked at a number of things to make the decisions and make the recommendations that we do, that we'll get into in a minute. We looked at the logistical patterns, we looked at environmental concerns, crash data that drives some of these solutions that we're about to look at. One of the big ones I mentioned earlier is the truck, truck traffic as well as the railroad, so the bridges and the crossings in the corridor become very important, especially near the urban downtown area. We also had a number of public engagement events, some of you may have seen us, we went to the farmer's market, we went to the Rose Lawn Arts Festival, as well as creating an online forum that allows people to leave comments. This, this allows people to feel engaged and feel like this is not just something that the city is doing outside of their bounds, that they're not involved in. This allows them to put their input in, both on what they think of the corridor before we even propose anything, and then we went back at the Rose Lawn event saying, what do you think about some of these ideas? In the urban area, you can see in the pictures, some of the challenges that regard stormwater, traffic, stoplights, limited right-of-way in utilities. In the urban area, we went ahead and started putting out some of the ideas, what are some of the things that we would like to do and evaluate? Some of those included a pedestrian network all the way through the downtown area, there'll be like a 10-foot shared-use path on the west side, and a regular sidewalk, five-foot consistent sidewalk on the east side. That would also incorporate a number of traffic signal improvements in the main corridor of the downtown, which would be like Main Street, Cherokee, Church Street. So this is a little more developed plan of what that would look like. It also became clear that we wanted to look at like Main Street, as it, as we talk about the train and logistical traffic, there's actually opportunities for us to make a change like at Gilmer, remove that traffic light, put stop signs there, and make those traffic operations move a little smoother. Our traffic analyst looks at the turning movements, they look at the volumes, we look at crash data to make sure that when we propose these kind of improvements that people may not be used to, that we, it should work within the data that we're collecting. This is a little bit of a blow-up of what I was talking of, you can see in the top left, the proposal for removing Gilmer Street light and making those intersecting streets stop-controlled, and then possibly even removing the Cherokee Avenue light, and you see those green ovals in the middle, those would be like medians, that kind of create a gateway for the downtown area. And we also analyzed other opportunities around about potentially on Main Street or at Leake Street, to help with the operations around the south end of the downtown area. In the transitional area, this is where a lot of the car dealerships are, there's a lot of open driveways and pull-in traffic that create a lot of conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. There's also, this is the area in which the high school is, and we, so we really want to accommodate both foot and vehicular traffic moving in and out of the high school, making sure that's accessible and that that's connected. So one of the big elements that we do there, and this is small text for the TV, but one of the big elements for this would be that create a widened sidewalk pedestrian area near the high school. This will be done in the form of a chicane, which is where you bump out the street. It would look, I say, a little bit like the picture on the left, where you bump that out for waves, and that would be approximately from about Ruby Street, Howard Street to Ruby Street heading north. What that would does is it creates that pedestrian area that's focused on the high school, it bumps that out, and also consolidates traffic down to two lanes in that area, cars slow down, they're more aware of other vehicles as well as pedestrians that are trying to cross, and then we'd also look at potential mid-block crossings there. I know that's something that we specifically heard. In the suburban area, this is north of Porter Street, there's still truck traffic here that we will not be able to eliminate, and some of the other corridors, we're trying to reduce the, the desire for trucks to travel down transitional and urban areas. In the suburban area, we're not going to be able to eliminate that truck traffic because they still need to use the Porter Street Bridge from the north to get over to some of that industrial areas in the west, northwest part of Cartersville. You can see that we have open areas, now we've, we've kind of dropped the curb and gutter, we've gone to open asphalt, so there's some stormwater concerns, there's some equity issues. You can see with a fence next to, to a sidewalk, this is where speeds really start to pick up, and there is no stop control between Porter and Felton.[1756.97] up, and there is no stop control between Porter and Felton. So what we would look at here is kind of try to like interrupt some of the traffic that's occurring between Felton and Porter as you're coming into the downtown. We also want to, we want to hold on to the ten-foot shared-use path that would accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians on the west side of the street and hold the five-foot consistent sidewalk on the east side of the street. But Gentilly specifically, even in one of these public comment events that we had, like an eighty-year-old lady, she came up to me and she was like, I come out of Home Depot. I go to Gentilly. I'm so afraid to take that left back towards downtown that I actually drive back around to Felton, get the light at Felton, and then come south from there. So Gentilly is one of our prime target projects that I will talk about in just a second that we, that we're really targeting, that we think would make a major impact along the Tennessee Street corridor. Again, this is just graphic of continuing on those pedestrian elements up to Felton. You can see on the graphic on the left, generally talking about what I was talking about with traffic moving pretty freely down to about Porter, the potential for roundabouts, potentially at Collins, but mainly at Gentilly, kind of interrupt that, and then a slower-moving traffic as you anticipate coming into the downtown. What are, one of our main deliverables for this project was, was a vision document that really details what this corridor can become, and that will identify a number of projects with budgets and schedules. We've delivered that. It's a very large document, and it's actually still being added on to as we get to our next phase as well. That vision reporting, again, is that kind of that outward-facing guide for what we want to do on Tennessee Street. And the next thing that we'll do is move on to the GDOT concept report and kind of starting to get into some of the technical detailed areas, curb radii and lane width, some of those very detailed specifics that will dictate what's finally possible. We also have kind of worked on some branding for the corridor and some ideas of what could get the public excited about the corridor, and especially, you know, as developers come in and they see what the potentials are, they can start to identify what some of their plans could be. I mentioned the action plan earlier, specific projects that would come out of this vision. This is a matrix of how we would make some of those decisions. And then the projects themselves, you can see that there's a one overall overriding project in green. It would be the pedestrian network from west and Postell all the way up to Felton. But then there's some individual projects identified with those blue dots. You can see in the charts the estimated both time schedules and budgets that would be associated with those. That way, you guys can start to plan ahead. You can start to pick maybe what's most beneficial to the city now and most feasible now, and then also plan for maybe some of the projects in the future that you can start to set aside money for. We talk about setting aside money. That's ultimately, this is on a state route. There's two state routes that merge in the downtown. So as we start to talk about setting aside money, we also talk about identifying money, and that would be both possibly through the state and GDOT as well as locally. When we talk about going to the state, what we want to do is prepare some GDOT concept report templates. They kind of give them a good idea that the MPO can use, so they can have a good idea of what we're trying to do, and then they can say, this is feasible within our state guidelines and regulations, and this is something that we can buy in on. And that allows the MPO, the city, to easily start to apply for these funds. I do want to think, and I know some of the people I mentioned earlier, but Dan and Randy, David, Tom's here, and then the Rose Lawn and the farmer's market folks as well have been very helpful during this process. Hopefully, the next time you guys see me, we'll be talking about a more specific project. Maybe it's like the Gentilly Roundabout. Maybe it's another project, but hopefully we'll be talking about how to program a specific project. And so when I mentioned the vision report earlier, there is a lot of study and a lot of data that goes into that. If any of you have further questions, we can, we can make ourselves available to walk you all through that. But we did want to provide an opportunity for you guys to ask questions now about maybe some of the projects that are in front of you, or if there's anything about our process that you would wonder. Yes?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how much of this project fits in the current right-of-way and how much right-of-way or additional acquisition of property would be?
There would be potentially some right-of-way required, like slivers. It would, by no means be whole properties. We're trying to fit most of the improvements within the right-of-way that exists so that we would minimize and hopefully be able to mitigate those right-of-way costs, because it is a very long, two-and-a-half miles. That's a long corridor with properties on both sides.
A couple of questions.
Okay.
Thank you for this study, by the way. I guess the elimination of some of the traffic lights that are proposed, is the thought that that's going to make traffic flow a little bit quicker?
The thought right now is, is that there is a lot of conflict that occurs at those traffic lights. So we were really evaluating what other possibilities there would be. We have done some of those initial studies using some of the data I mentioned earlier to make sure that what we're proposing would work. Within those projects, when we start getting into the engineering phases, we would, again, come back and determine and make sure that, not just that they work, but this is truly what the city wants. But these, to answer your question, I believe, they would work on the engineering, on the engineering layout and operations side. It doesn't necessarily mean that in every case, that's how the final improvement would land.
Gotcha. Okay. And then the other one, I think it was in the transitional area where you're talking about doing some narrowing of the roads to slow down the traffic?
Yes.
Again, my thought would be, I typically avoid Tennessee Street and go Gilmer, because usually it's, it's a little bit slower already. And I guess I'm thinking of the driver experience. I know you want to slow people down for pedestrians, but traffic, at least to me, seems it's already a little bit slow in that area. My assessment of that is pretty accurate. How much of a negative impact would that have in travel times, I guess, down Tennessee Street?
Well, one of the goals that we kind of started with was that Tennessee Street is kind of that Main Street that I was speaking of earlier, and that we really want Tennessee Street to be used as a Cartersville road. I didn't get into a lot of the data, but one good example is, is that we found through some of the information that we can access that Tennessee Street is being used thirty percent for a cut-through street. That's very high for a cut-through road. And what we would like to do is really try to reduce that number so that Tennessee Street is much more of a local street, and it's not something for, somebody north of Bartow County, I won't pick on a northern Bartow city, Calhoun, if they're traveling south, that they're not getting off of seventy-five or getting off of forty-one and trying to use Tennessee as a cut-through in the mornings or afternoons only for the purposes of bypassing your city, no intentions of stopping at your stores or commercial activity.
Gotcha. Yes, sir. Thank you.
The other point to that, I think, is you like looked at the traffic data, and there's a number of accidents. I don't remember the number on Tennessee Street. It seemed to be higher, I recall, for Cleveland Normal.
Yes. The number of accidents that occur on Tennessee Street are very high. In that section that you actually just mentioned in the transitional area, with there not being any stop control, what we find is a lot of times that people, people know and understand that, and they get going. And then the second, somebody decides that they want to either pull off to the right or left, and they start to slow down. A lot of the police reports that we went through show that people are just rear-ending them a good bit. Almost all the accidents were rear-ins. But the numbers were very high for the corridor over a five-year period.
This, again, is a concept report to kind of give the council an idea of what potentially it could look like if you're interested. I'll bring it back up. I mean, obviously, I'd like to be thinking about it, see what you want to do going forward. Gentilly, if you think about a roundabout, that's an area, because once most of the truck traffic turns down Porter Street, and it is very difficult to come out of there, to turn left out of there if you have ever gone through that way. So it's like, what, how do we want to approach that? Do we want a stoplight eventually? Do we want a roundabout to keep the traffic flowing through there? But these are concepts that, again, council determine what we want to do, what to work with Bartow County, MPO, to get funding, and then work with GDOT as well to see what we want to do. And this is all kind of a long-range plan, how we want to see that corridor develop.
I had a couple of questions, just curiosity. Under your action plan, you reference GDOT-PDP.
Yes, sir.
What, I know what GDOT is. What is PDP?
Oh, that's Plan Development Process. And so, once the project gets in within the state tip, which is their funding mechanism, what more or less happens is then you're kind of within GDOT's schedule. And for most projects, individualized projects, you're actually looking at probably a three- to five-year window. And with our experience, it could be an intersection. It could be an entire corridor. You're still going to be beholden to that time period because they're checking off all of their boxes. And so what I put there was just to make sure that this, on the schedule, was is that this could be an anticipated schedule, but if it starts to get into that tip funding, that it could start to stretch it out based upon GDOT's own schedule.
And my second one on the, I guess, the pedestrian corridor on both sides of the road. Does y'all's cost estimate include the cost of relocating the utilities that are already in there, or was that left out?
The cost for stormwater is considered.
Okay. But not like the electric poles that may or may not be within that five or ten-foot area?
Our goal wouldn't be to potentially, if there was a single pole that we needed to shift a couple of feet. But on a project like this, that runs a corridor length, we really don't have the budget to shift entire strain, it's all the way, because they're all contingent upon one another. So either, you know, we would plan a significant amount of money for that, or we would try to dodge it. And that's what our current plan is, is to try to dodge most utilities.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening? And if you would, sir, your name and your address so that our clerk can include you in our minutes.
Yes. Can I give her a copy here?
Absolutely.
I'll state your name and address first.
Robert Jackson. Robert Jackson. I live in the city, eight Greenacre Lane. And what I'm requesting here is just some consideration here for a little bit of relief from sewer water. Our, I have a good-sized garden or a garden in my backyard, which I have room for. In this past year, I had a little or no garden because of the dry weather and the heat. And what I'd like is the water that I use to water the garden, like the relief from the sewer charge, just on that amount of water that goes to the garden versus what's used normally and already metered. And that's basically what I'm asking for. And I, this paper I give to your clerk here spells all this out. And I do have a suggested way of metering this, and that would be if you would take the amount of usage from, let's say, I'll just, you don't have to use these months, but I'll use October through March, and use that as an average usage. And then in the summer months, other than that, the usage would be anything over that, there would be a relief for sewer charges just on that amount. And everything else would remain the same. And that's all I'm asking for, is just some consideration to have you look at that.
Any questions? It would require an ordinance change. And I know I've actually had a few people over the last year, more like when people put in sod or when they're putting in, if they've got a pool that they need to fill. Again, it would require an ordinance change relative to doing the calculations as you proposed with the months. I don't, the only way I would be able to see that working regardless of what we did is if there was a separate meter that you could measure was actually coming through that meter versus...
Yeah. That was, that was brought up to me as I talked to a couple three-year people, and they brought that up. The meter is for a big operation. It's very expensive to have to put something like that in. I don't, the city, I don't know would pay for that. From what I understand, they probably don't. I don't know.
I don't see why we would.
That's, that's something we could discuss or take a look at. But, let's see what else here.
Are you looking for a relief from a, from a current bill or moving forward or for next?
Moving forward, in the summertime, moving forward. Yeah. Yeah. And they explained to me it would probably require a ordinance change in there. And I said, you know, well, let's take a look at it and consider it and see if you will consider it. Because, and the other thing, the last thing would be, residents like myself would have to request this relief. It wouldn't just be a blanket relief for all your area that you cover. And they'd have to request that, so. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, sir. Anything else that needs to come forward, council, this evening? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
A move. Stay gold.
Go Kings.
And go Kings.